I call the city council meeting to order, May the 24th, 1999. Our first item on the agenda will be the invocation by council member Don Arp, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Will you please rise?
... like manner. Heavenly Father, I want to thank you for the rains that you've sent us lately. I pray that you will be with our leaders as we're having international conflicts and help those to be resolved. I pray that you will be with all of our armed forces that are overseas and be with them. I pray that you will lead, guide, and direct us, for it's in Christ's holy and precious name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We want to thank you for coming this evening. Under request and presentations, number one, we have a proclamation proclaiming week, May 23, 1999, as Small Business Week in Haltem City. And normally, I'm not going to read all of these proclamations into the record, but our community is made up of so many small business folks that sometimes get overlooked in the scheme of things. And I'd like to just say a few things that are in the proclamation. Small business constitutes the single most important segment of our free enterprise system, accounting for 60 percent of our gross national product and more than half of the American labor force. Small business is evidence of the independence, initiative, and hard work of the owner-operator, being a major factor in our nation's stability and growth. The small businessman in our community has always taken a leading role in economic and civic affairs and will continue to play an important role in maintaining and improving the economic health of our community. I urge all of our citizens to join me in recognizing the contributions our small business enterprises have made to national and local development. And proclamation, agenda item number two, is proclaiming the week of June 7 through 12 as Management Week in Haltem City. Our next agenda item is the consent agenda, and it consists of items number three through 13A. 13A was a new item that was added tonight, and it's a grant application for wastewater facility planning. And we're ready for motion, gentlemen. Councilmember Williams?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we step to the consent agenda item, items three through nine, including 13A.
13A, yes. Thank you. Yes. Councilmember Jennings?
That would be for a second.
That would be Councilmember Hanselley?
That was for a second.
Councilmember Markham?
Second.
Councilmember Kenonis?
Same.
We have a motion and seconds. Please register your vote. Passes unanimously. Next, we come to our Visitors and Citizens Forum. I have not received any speaker's request.
No cards available.
I beg your pardon.
No cards available.
Oops.
Okay, Helen.
Our city secretary's out of town, and we have a stand-in tonight.
If you can call it that. They're here. It's possible.
Are you, can you tell me what item you're here to discuss?
Eleven.
Oh, okay. Well, we're just on number, we're just on the Visitors and Citizens Forum right now. So is there anyone here that wishes they had a speaker's card to fill out for the Visitors and Citizens Forum? Okay. Then we'll move on to public hearings. Item number 10 on the agenda.
Item number 10 is a plat for property owned by Glenview Baptist Church. The purpose of the plat is that the church is expanding its facilities, has recently acquired some additional land, which to do that expansion, it's necessary to replat or plat the existing property along with the newly acquired property so that they can go forward with their expansion of facilities.
I now open this public hearing. Is the applicant here? Would you step forward, please? Give him an address for the record.
I'm Roger Holler. I'm the Associate Pastor for Administration at Glenview, and our address is 4805 Northeast Loop 820.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone here to speak for this agenda item?
I'll speak for it.
We know you want to speak for it.
We appreciate your cooperation in helping us move forward with that. Appreciate that very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak against this agenda item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll be ready for a vote from council. Councilmember Kenonis?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move that we approve the plat as requested in PE 01799.
Councilmember Arp?
Move to approve. I mean, second.
Have a, Councilmember Markham?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please register your vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you. We move now to other business. Agenda item number 11 is the Fossil Beach Phase III property owners. Mr. Eisen?
Do you have a request this evening from property owners in Fossil Beach, and I'm sure they'd like to present their own case, and I just turn it over to them.
All right. Do you have a spokesperson for your group?
Yes, it's me.
You're it? If you would step forward, please, and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Amy Delion, and I live at 5744 Bridgeport Court. Most of, well, several of the faces are familiar.
Amy, if I might interrupt you just one second. We did receive a handout just a few minutes ago, but I do want you to know that none of us have had time to even look at it, much less read it.
I understand.
Okay.
And I do apologize about the tardiness. I've been very overloaded. Really, this is background. Anyone that was on the council before has, this is familiar territory, and just notes and things that the city has given us in their dealing with this. And I just wanted to give the new council members the background on this case. The questions that, the problem that we have is that now we have a 15-foot access easement. This was, this was told and relayed to us that it would be an emergency access easement for emergency use only. Well, we have cars, we have trucks, we have the developer showing this street back and forth in between our neighborhoods. Well, this worries us. You know, we bought on a cul-de-sac, assuming it was a cul-de-sac. I'd like to know, and I've requested several times, but I'd like to know when it was platted and when was the cul-de-sac a temporary court, as we've been told, quote from the, from the city. It's a temporary court. Well, in, in the neighboring subdivision that's been opened up to us, their temporary courts were blacktopped, leading you to believe that it is not a court. You knew upfront that it was not. Another thing is, if it was a temporary court, why was it a 50-foot radius ported in concrete with storm drain? If it was going to be cut into, you would think it would make more sense to be a straight lane and just dead end if you know that it's going to have access to the other neighborhood. This was an additional expense paid by the developer. The city, I'm sure, did not pay for this. It was all developer has to pay for the drainage and, and the streets. Also, we were told that this was, quote, "for emergency access to our neighborhood," that our 31 homes were unsafe having one entrance and one exit. Well, the subdivision going next to us, 200-plus homes, two entrances, two exits, one on Haltem Road and one on Fossil Ridge. It seems to me that the ratio's a little higher for them, and why do they not have more entrance and exits? It seems to me that they're going to be the ones that are benefiting opening up this street, because that's going to be a shortcut. Anyone living on the west side of this property, of course, it's going to be shorter for them to cut through our neighborhood and access Fossil Ridge instead of driving back up through their neighborhood. That puts them at a ratio of 1 to 100-plus for entrance and exits. We also would, would like to know why, on our plating of our lots, and it is included in this packet, it does not state that Lot 24, I believe it is, is to be used for, for public access back and forth to the park, but clearly, on the new plats for Guyan, it does state that a lot is dedicated and will be used for access back and forth to the park. We were not aware of this. No one in our neighborhood knew. Now, the, the later property, people that purchased property, they knew, because it was constructed, but people that bought before this had no clue. It was not, the builder did not advertise it, the city did not advertise it. We came and looked at the plats, and it was never stated that this was going to be a public access. You know, at this point, we want the emergency access road to be used for emergency access only, and it clearly is not. And it seems like we've been shuffled and moved around, and I know y'all are, y'all really don't want to spend any more time on this. You have been very generous with your time, but it just seems like too many things don't add up. And we'd like to know who, where it was that the ball got dropped, where it was that we were not notified, that the access to the records were not given to us, and we would, we would like to know when this is going to be finished. Clearly, the sidewalk that encircles the, the court has not been finished. I've lived in my house for two years. The last council meeting a year ago, when this decision was made in April, when they came to their decision, I heard Mr. Newen, what is it?
Dan Newhues.
There you go. I have a trouble with his name.
That's easy.
Gregory. I have Gregory. I did hear him saying that, that we came, and yes, we did, and before the meeting started, he took us to his office and showed us the new plattings and told us there was no reason for us to stay. There were three residents, that this would not affect us, the replating and rezoning. Now, I'm sorry, had I known that, that this was going to be replatted, I would have stayed. But I was told by Gregory, and you can defend yourself, that is not incorrect, and then we have three residents that will say that.
You have a sick child that night, ma'am, and you didn't want to stay here.
No.
The only reason I came out, I've come before when people have made accusations towards me, and I've taken it back there. This is incorrect.
Could I?
Well, I understand, and, you know, Gregory has, has tried to deal with this as best as, as I'm sure that he thinks is the best interest of, of all of the residents, but it seems to me that there's too many factors pointing to Guyan profiting or, or being the benefactor of this. And kind of, we're going to, we're going to put this in, and we're going to develop it while there's not enough residents in the air, in your neighborhood, and we're going to go ahead and push it on through, and it just seems to me like our concerns were not noted. And right now, we have traffic that runs over our yards, you know, the, we call the police, and the police never show up. The pavilion across the way at the park, I have called four times at night when kids are over there just demolishing it. You can hear the rocks banging off of it. Nobody ever comes out. We've been told, go ahead, call the police. You can see what they've done in, in the two weeks since we have asked to be on count, to be heard at the council meeting. They have came out and they've put the reflector poles up. Well, and I'd, I'd like to go ahead and show you these. This is what is existing right now that we get to look out at every day. And here's some additional pictures of the tracks running over the grass, running over everyone's driveway getting access to this. We would, we would just like the situation resolved, and it's not that we don't like what we're hearing, it's, it's just that it seems like you're put, like, like it's having a Band-Aid put on it instead of the issue being resolved.
Could I ask you to have a seat close by so you don't have to, have to walk too far? I'm sure there's going to be some questions, and in the meantime, council have a chance to look at your photos. Would you come back to the mic, please, and tell us what, if any additional steps you think might be taken by the city on your behalf?
Well, they put the two reflector poles up.
Right.
Well, those can be negotiated around, and as a matter of fact, we sit in our, our living room and watch people go up and take the barricades down and drive around them. In some instances, they don't bother to take the barricade down, they just jump the curb and go right on across. This is, this, you can't have a road cutting through from one neighborhood to another and expect it to be used, quote, "for emergency access only." It just, it will not work. I mean, we have sat and watched traffic come across it, and that's a real appealing factor.
Are you saying they come around on the sides of these barricades?
On the side, on, yes, ma'am, on the north side of the fire hydrant.
Yes, and through, I can't ima, they must have more energy than me to stop and take them down before they drive through them. Tell me what you think we could do to help improve the situation, and then we have some council members with some questions.
Well, I, really, I, I don't know what the solution is for this. That's why we're coming to council. We, we have tried to mediate with the council and tried to work with the city on this, and it seems like there's, the road is there, that's it. I mean, it makes, the reflector poles are no deterrent. I mean, the kids now run across them with their bikes. I mean, they're, they're not, they're not any kind of deterrent at all.
Well, let's, let's begin with Councilmember Kenonis.
Okay, a couple of things. As you remember, Ms. Delion, we spoke last year when this was here, and some of your questions that are listed, I think we're past some of those, and what I mean by that is, we, you know, I was in agreement with the fact that, yes, that's going to stay a court as far as the best we can do that. There was not going to be a street punched through there, and I don't know, and if you remember, we had, I think, three meetings last time about that, about why, where, and when, and what happened, and whether it was going to be a through street and all that. So I'm agreeing with you, that, that condition needs to stay the way it is. Now, I do agree that, I am concerned, looking at these pictures, that it's taken a while for this to get done, like we had agreed and proposed and authorized almost, well, over a year ago now. And in pre-council, we were given some, some plan of what they want to do, which was put up something like a gate. I don't know if they've had a chance to review that with you yet, but it looks like something that might address the needs that you have. Now, some of your questions as to when we knew about it, and who knew what, and all, I think, I don't think we can answer those for you right now, because when we made a proposal last year, which we passed unanimously to, to make those changes to try to deal with the problems y'all were having, it took into account those factors. I mean, I, for one, accepted the fact that y'all may have been misled about whether that was going to be a court or a through, through street or not. I agreed with y'all. I agree that the way, the benefit of doubt goes your way, and I can see why that was the case, as well as some of the other things. And I'm willing to work in those parameters, and the same thing with what is being recommended this time.
Mm-hmm.
And so, from what we saw just about a half hour ago, I think we might be able to take care of your problem. But again, I am concerned also, like you, that it's taken this long for some of these things to be done. And so, I don't know. Is something like a gate something y'all would be satisfied with that runs across there?
Well, definitely, that would be, that would be more of a deterrent than to-
Well, it'll still have the same-
-hot wheel tracks on, on mounts, you know, basically, is what, what those are. I mean, you can see when the winds pick up, they just flail in the wind, and if the, if the traffic deterrent is, is waving back and forth, how much of a deterrent is it?
You say cars come through that, and I'm just curious, are they passers-through, or are they people who live in the neighborhood, or do you recognize the cars?
Looking, looking through the, the subdivision on the other side.
In the newer one that's being developed?
In the newer one, yes.
Okay.
Surveying the lots, trying to pick out their, their new home.
Okay. And you're saying you saw them take down, move the barricades?
Oh, definitely. And, and not only just, not only consumers, but the, the main thing we've been having trouble with are the construction trucks. And those are the ones that drive over the driveways, because they don't want to be bothered to get out and take down the barricades.
Okay. Well, I think that's something we can take care of pretty quick, I would think, that we can get word to them to, that they should understand that, and I'm surprised that hadn't been, that's not something that's been done already. At least, I think the developer would have told them that from the first day you had them out there. Again, I, I see a lot of these questions, and I, these are things we covered over a year ago, and I think from my, what we were presented with is how we're going to resolve this problem, the way it is built, and what we proved previously. And outside of that, I don't have any more questions till I hear from Greg, because I curiously hear what he has to say, too, but, but I'm in agreement with you, but I think what we've been offered is a pretty good solution, and it'll be, you'll be made aware of it here, I'm sure, soon.
Okay.
Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have gone out and surveyed the land, and you and I spoke Wednesday. One of the things that we did not bring up in pre-council that concerned me is the fact that there's a, for lack of a better word, a pit there now.
They covered it today.
Did they cover that pit? Well, that was one of my major concerns, because that was an open area, and it was only bordered by one of those police barricade things, plastic retainers, and I was, I was certainly afraid that some child might, you know, fall in there. Evidently, that's no longer a concern. For people out there that are not aware of what the, what the situation here, this is a very unique situation in that the street you live on is shaped like a dog bone. It is cul-de-sac, or at the time it was designed and built, was cul-de-sac on both ends, and access is only through Marianne running north and south. And the city's concern is that at some time, due to some circumstance, Marianne could become blocked off, and at such time, there would be no access to your street. At this point, when you don't have a problem, it's not a concern. Unfortunately, the city has to look at worst-case scenario, and I do agree with the city staff that there, there does need to be a way to get a fire truck in there. If you had a gas leak up on Marianne and they had to cut that street off, there would be absolutely no way to get a vehicle in there. So I understand that it does, it does need to have some type of other access. I've also been out there and seen the problems that you're up against, and I have seen tracks running through the areas that you've described. I've seen the pictures that I did not see the other day when I was out there of where, you can see the mud that has been distributed on driveways. That is a problem. That concerns me. If my house were there, I certainly would be up in arms about that, so I understand what you're saying. I agree with Councilmember Kenonis that this particular issue, we, we need to bring it to a close. You've waited an awful long time to determine what can be done. If you'll look at the, the paperwork that I gave you back there, there was a rendition of the gate. I don't know if you saw that. It was on top of the copies that I handed you back. I wanted to make sure that you saw that. That was really all the comments I had. I just wanted to make sure that the pit had gotten covered up.
Thank you. Councilmember Williams?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Delion, I was wondering, I wasn't on the council, I don't believe, when this was passed last time. I think I was just in the process of being elected in. And when y'all bought this property, was there any kind of deed restriction or anything? Was that road entered? Did he just, was that kind of a gentleman's agreement that, that we're going to charge you more for this property?
No, it was, it was written in. It is a lot premium. Yes.
It's a lot premium?
Yes.
I understand you, and I didn't know it a while ago in the pre-council. This has been an ongoing thing for a year to get this completed.
I've been dealing with this for two years, between the city path and, and now the new path.
I want to know how come we're not alleging point? We set some guidelines and drew a line and told them, this is what we want, and this is when we want it. Are we in a position to do that with this?
I don't get the connection.
The, the completing the stuff, with, with the exception of, they're going around the side, why are those supposed to be on each side of this? We're not complete, right, with what we're going to do with it, or what the builder's going to do with this?
No, this is the first draft we've ever seen of this. It was slated as a 15-foot pathway.
The, the builder in that area has done what he's going to do at this point. If anything more is done, such as installation of the gate, that would be done at city expense, and we have some plans, which we're drawing up today about 3:30 or 4 o'clock, which is why you haven't seen them yet, which try to take into account some of these concerns and some of the comments you made in, in your most recent communication with council. But the difference in this and the alleged point situation is, and the reason this took a year or two to do, is it wasn't supposed to be put in until there was a phase two of the subdivision to the east, because there was no need for it, there was no access to this area till then.
And when they get this gate in, how much area on each end of the gate is there going to be where they can come around? I know that's going to be the next question, because if I was devious-
It's a 25-foot lot that they've dedicated, I believe. Is that correct? That lot's 25 feet?
Yeah, the, the overall width of the easement's 25 feet, the paving is 15 feet. If you put the, the gate across it, you're going to have to have some room on either end for things like the, the posts and so on. We'd estimate where there was five feet on either side before, there'll be four to four and a half feet. And one of the things that we have included on the drawing is that would continue to be sidewalk access around the gate, because that was, has always been intended as part of the access to the park path for persons who live to the immediate east, and that is part of what was drawn up for you. So there wouldn't be enough room for a vehicle to get through.
Once they get completed, there will not be enough room for a vehicle to get through there, is that right?
That's correct. And also, if I may, and what does not show up on this drawing, and I know, Ms. Delion, you've only had a minute to look at it, we have also talked with Mr. Guyan, the developer to the east, indicated to him what some of these concerns were about people going around the, the path, and he has agreed to put up a fence on both sides extending 60 feet in either direction, which would keep people from using it who weren't authorized to use it. The best solution obviously is going to be when there are houses on either side of it, and they have their permanent fences up, and it, and it looks like nothing but an access easement, but in the interim at least, I think that might give you some relief.
Well, thank you.
And you will understand that no one will be able to park in front of this gate once it's put in.
Well, we were told that we couldn't put, that, that the city was not allowed to put no parking signs or whatnot anyways down there. We don't, we don't have a lot of parking in our court besides visitors to the park.
Right.
All of us that live in the court park in our driveways and in the garage, so that's not an issue.
But if you happen to have a party or something, I-
There's enough street on our, in our neighborhood that they can find a place to park.
And the final thing would be calling the police. You say you're calling them, and they're just not coming out at all, they're not responding, or are they coming out, like, they do this on a priority basis, I do know that.
Well, I'm calling them and saying, there's someone driving through right now, but, you know, we're not getting a response. We'll, we'll sit and wait to see, are they going to come? Are they going to come? And of course, the people leave, and we sit and wait and wait, thinking, okay, someone's going to show up, and, and we don't even see a drive-by or anything.
I have a feeling someone's over my left shoulder, and if you make a phone call and you don't get response in what you think's a normal time, probably Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, you may be able to call his office or the city manager's office, and I bet you can probably find out when they come.
We have a date, times when you call, and then get responsible, be glad to do some research and find out what happened in those instances. And certainly, anytime that you-
Chief Burt, I'm sorry. Would you come to the microphone, please?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Madam Mayor. As always, we'll be glad to do some research, find out what happened. A lot of times in those cases, if it's prioritized low, they'll make a drive-through in that area. If you haven't seen them driving through, you can always ask the dispatcher to have the officers contact you, so they will come directly to your house or whatever, once they've checked the area. If you don't get a response, or if you think that they haven't shown up, please give us a call. a call, and I'll be glad to do some research, find out what happened, let you know. But it is our goal, obviously, to respond in a rapid and expeditious manner to calls for service. Although I will tell you that people driving around barricades or something is not a high-priority call, based on whatever else is going on that night. Do you have any other questions I can answer for council?
Thank you, Chief.
Drop one. I was going to ask, if she gives you a specific license number and says this person's driving around, can you take action?
That it's just driving around in the area?
No, if someone drives through that emergency access...
If they drive through that area, yes.
She gives you a license number?
The problem is, in order to file a specific charge, we have to be able to identify not just the vehicle, but the individual who was operating the vehicle. Now, if she's able to pick them out from a photo lineup or something of that sort, we possibly could do something. I'll tell you that that's an awful lot of time and investigative resources on what is a fairly insignificant issue that way. We would much rather catch the individual in the car, because we can identify them immediately, cite them, and then take appropriate course of action. So that's much more appropriate, I think, from our standpoint. If we're having a problem at a specific time or date, I'll be glad to put some motorcycle officers or other people down in that area, see if we can't identify who's doing that, because we do want to respond to the issue. Other questions?
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Councilmember Williams, did you have anything else?
That's us. Our friend is, she didn't get to sign that.
Did you have anything else, sir?
That's all I have.
Okay. Councilmember Markham?
Mayor, a lot of discussion has taken place since I asked to speak there just a few moments ago. I was just going to say, Ms. DeLeon, I was out there yesterday. I just came on board to the council two weeks ago, and I'm trying to take bits and pieces from the discussions a year ago, and the new things that are happening, and taking everything and trying to put it all together.
Mm-hmm.
And it's been rather difficult. But I understand your problem. I see your problem. And hopefully, we can get something done in a very short time. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Hanserlin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much.
I wanted to just kind of clarify something Councilmember Williams was talking about earlier. He was trying, talking about putting a deadline on that. I think he was referring to the developer like we did at Legend Point, and specifically the 60-foot fence going east, west, north, and south. If we could apply a deadline to that fence, or, I know we talked about pre-council, they were going to do that fence before they, before they got any building permits in that particular development. And I don't know if that timeline, just an informal timeline, meets the intent of what we want to do, or can we impose something?
Yeah, we, our discussions with the developer have been that he would put the fence up in 20 days, within 20 days.
In 20 days? Okay. The other thing I just want to point out, once, have you seen the rendition of the little sketch here?
Mm-hmm.
There are spaces on both ends of the court where it might be appropriate to put some shrubbery or some trees. I passed down my sketch, but y'all can probably visualize where I'm talking about.
No, thanks.
But just eliminate the concern of people going around it, bicycles, et cetera, that they actually have to be on the sidewalk, or on the access, or on the four-foot sidewalk. There won't be much room for play on either end. And I don't know if the shrubs are a city issue, or the shrubs are a developer issue. I don't know, but, or if it's a neighborhood issue. I'm just saying that that's something that might help the situation.
Yeah, my only observation on the shrubbery would be, until development is complete in that area of new homes, they probably wouldn't survive the construction process. So you probably want to do that after homes are built on either side.
Okay.
Isn't it, isn't it my understanding that Mr. Guian is putting up this fence simply because we asked him to, and he has really no responsibility to do that?
He really doesn't have a responsibility to do that. We've agreed to expedite, I think, four building permits for him, and we'll issue those a couple, three weeks sooner than we typically would. But, but that's the only thing he's asked for, and that's all we've agreed to give.
I just wanted to give him credit where credit was due.
Sure, yeah, he's going to have his way, I think, to help the situation and come up with some solutions.
Right.
We've got 20 days on the fence. That's great, I think. Beats some of the other fences that's taken a little bit longer to get up.
Yeah.
How quick can we do the, get the bids and get the gate in? Is that a pretty short timeframe?
Jerry would be better at answering that. He's looked into, done on the paperwork.
Okay. Just a, just a quick, how quick can we get it done?
Yeah, I talked to the man about building the gate. He didn't give me a timeline, because it was just in the draft stage. He says they're quite busy right now, as most construction companies are, I would think, within 30 to 40 days.
Okay. Thanks, Jerry. Thank you.
Councilmember Arp?
I was just going to say, I was here whenever we were discussing this several times last year, and the gate was one of the things that we had discussed at that time. What I'd like to see is us have what we had agreed to a year ago come into fruition first, before we even consider the gate. The gate may not be necessary. The gate, whereas we lock this thing in, we also lock the residences in. If they need out, they can't get out. That's what we discussed the last time, and I think we ought to hold to that for now. We haven't finished the proposal that we did last year to see whether it's going to work or not. Right now, you could have a gate up there. They could still drive around it, because it's open on either side. And I would like to just wait, get the thing set up like it was originally decided on a year ago, and then see if we need a gate and do it later on.
Thank you. Councilmember Rowanby?
Not to go against my neighboring border here. I know this, the visuals we had last year versus the actual visual we see this year is a lot different. Just from the pictures that I saw, which were all drawings last year, and this are real, this year they're real pictures, okay? The distance is a lot further than it actually looked on those drawings, okay? Whereby you could see the little temporary guard blocks. And I have to tell you honestly, I come home from work every day down Trinity Boulevard to get to 157, and there used to be about 40 of those, and I do use the word "used to be," about two months ago. Okay? Because one day they had some traffic problems there, and guess what? People went right on over and wiped them out completely. They don't exist anymore. So I'm not in favor of finishing that project, because I don't think it's going to work.
Yeah.
Okay? Prior to that knowledge, and prior to the knowledge of the pictures, I probably would have stayed up, stood here with Don and told you 100% let us finish it first. If Mr. Guian will put fencing on both sides, along with and in conjunction with the gate itself, I think we can accomplish what we're shooting for. And that is to try and keep the people off of it, except for emergency access. So that's what I'd like to do. And when it gets ready for motion, I'll be glad to jump on the bandwagon.
All right, I have one more light, and then it's up to, it's all yours. Councilmember Quinones?
Well, I was going to agree with that. I think we do need to go ahead and resolve it tonight, because I don't think that, I'm convinced it's, what we've got is not going to work. I was really on the assumption we would have had a lot of this done a long time before though, and it's not happened. So I would think that this, this plan with the fence, with the gate and fences, Mr. Guian's going way out of his way to do it. We appreciate it. And, you know, plant shrubs, whatever, trees, that's fine. That was in the original design. We'll just put them in there. But I think we need to get it done this, tonight, really. I don't think we need to go on with it much longer.
No, I agree completely. This has been two years of surprises for us, and not welcome surprises. We were told at the last council meeting that we attended, that as soon as the concrete trucks came out, the sidewalk would be completed. And it's not. I have a rut and a ditch on, over the storm drain. We maintain the side yard that goes down to the park. You know, we, we try and take care of our neighborhood, because we are proud of it. And we'd like to see it come to a close.
Well, I think some of us agree that we're going to ask the staff to look into why some of this is still happening and all of that, and they'll take care of that at that level. But I do think, Madam Mayor, that we'd like to let Greg have an opportunity, I think he wanted to speak about something, I'd like to hear what he has to say at some point. After everyone else speaks. Or the citizen out here, if she wanted to speak, she's welcome also.
Hello. Y'all look so happy. My name is Julie Valbrecht. Actually, the house you saw in those pictures is mine. The driveway that ran over is mine.
Address, please.
5751 Bridgeport Court. Almost said her address for some reason. I just had one question. When we were talking about last year making the roadway, okay, they never told us they were going to change the look of the front of the road. Last year, it was a wheelchair access, so that wheelchairs were able to go up onto the path and go into the park. Now it's a total apron. And I guess my question is, why did they change it?
Emergency access.
But, but why? The trucks would, it was the same width as the roadway, the 15 feet, it was the same width as that.
We're guessing up here, emergency access.
We'd have to look at it, yeah.
Chief McIntyre? Okay?
Typically, it's a lot wider, I think, than what everyone envisioned. When you have a road that meets another road at an intersection, you have curb and gutter that goes around a radius, and the road, except for if you're on a hill or whatever, you're on the same level. When you're on a road, and you're going up to a sidewalk, you take a wheelchair ramp, you go up a ramp, and the sidewalk is up here six inches higher than the road. That's what you have here. That's what I described a year or two ago. Perhaps I just did a poor job of it, or, again, at 15-foot wide, it's a lot harder to visualize than it is a four-foot-wide sidewalk. So it is what I described. Again, it's just, I think, difficult to visualize, or perhaps, like I said, I did a poor job of trying to convey what I've just conveyed now.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanserlin, did you have something to add before I give it back to...
No, I was going to second a motion.
All right. Well, just hold that thought.
Okay.
Councilmember Rowanby?
Do I get to make a motion now?
It's all yours. Excuse me one minute. Go ahead.
Bill?
Prior to the motion being made, I did want to clarify, because I don't think I really mentioned earlier, the fence that would be built, the materials to be used would be a wire-type fence rather than a stockade fence. I don't know if that makes any difference in the minds of the council's consideration, but I did want to make sure that was clarified prior to you taking any formal action.
You're saying a cyclone?
Just a second.
It's going to be like a tubular? It's going to be like a tubular? Like a wrought iron or tubular type, or chain?
No, it would be essentially a netting wire, type wire, or a, oh, what's a good way? A slick wire, obviously not a barbed wire or something like that, but something that would be pretty clear and pretty obvious to people, you can't go through it. And I imagine steel post, something like that. I'm not sure, we haven't worked that out in its final form. But it is something, obviously, is going to be temporary, until the homes are built on the site, and there's a wooden stockade fence. And the wooden stockade fence is just part of what that particular home builder includes on every house they build, like pretty much every home builder does.
Now, we're talking about the gate's going to be like a wire?
No, no, not the gate. This is the fencing on either side. The gate itself will be, will be steel.
Okay.
Okay, so I understand correctly, what we'd like to do is make a motion to approve the gate being put up, and it's going to be put up in conjunction along with a temporary fence by Mr. Guian to border on both sides to keep the traffic from being able to go through and flow through. Correct?
So done.
So done. Do you still care to second the motion?
Yeah, I just want to throw out the shrub issue. We just want to let that shrub die, or are we going to...
We had shrubs in the original plan. I don't see why we can't have them now.
We did.
Yes.
We did. But who was funding, who was funding those shrubs? Was he?
You'll have to come to the microphone, please.
I'm sorry. From what I understood at the meeting last year, when this all went through, Mr. Guian said he was going to fund the shrubbing thing.
Okay.
But I do have one question on your fence. If it's going to be a nylon fence, what is going to stop a child or any of the kids from cutting through it, climbing over it, playing on it, running their bikes into it, things like that?
Or any other kind of fence, really?
Well, yeah, but if it's something that's going to be a hard fence, like a wood fence, I mean, the likelihood of running a car or a bike or something into that is going to be less likely than a kid trying to just see how fast he's going to make it through whatever's up there.
I can, can I shed some light on you?
Uh-huh.
Once, when I did not have my glasses years ago, I drove through a fence that was a temporary fence. And as long as it's a temporary wire fence, the impact will be known, and will do the damage necessary.
I'm just worried, because my house borders that. I mean, my, my children are five and six, so they're the ones that are going to be out there investigating all what's going on. And, you know, with the digging and everything, as of today so far, I have no phone, and I've been out my electricity and things like that. So I'm just worried about their safety, in terms of kids coming up and just trying to bash through it, basically. I mean, if it, if it works and it holds, and it's going to make them not do it, fine. But I'm worried more about my children and their safety with this fence and everything else, too.
That's like, even if we put up a gate, which we are proposing to do, the right person can still break through the gate.
Right, right.
It's the same thing as the locks. Locks are there to keep us, to be honest. If we put a fence up and a gate, and they go through it, well, then it is a police matter.
Okay. See, I've never seen a temporary fence, so I'm not envisioning what exactly it is. So that's what my worry is.
With shrubs.
I'll, I'll second that, with, Councilmember Quinones mentioned that Guian was planning to do the shrubs at the appropriate time. It's probably premature at now, but with the, kind of, the understanding that they will at the proper time put the shrubs up. So I'll second that motion.
Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to address a concern that we had in pre-council, as far as to the uprights that are existing there now. We talked about the problem of the fence being in the middle of the emergency access, and the need for possibly having the pylons remain on each end of the street. Here again, solely as a deterrent, realizing that they could be knocked down. But it would keep someone probably from parking directly in front of that emergency access. I would like to see that as part of the motion, if at all possible.
Okay, I have a motion, and I have a second. And for discussion purposes, he would like to see if you would care to amend your motion?
Yeah, that'd be fine. I'd make the motion to have the gate put up with the pylons left for a deterrent of parking, and also to have the shrubs put up at the appropriate time.
Councilmember Hanserlin, do you want to second that motion?
I'll second that.
You'll second that motion? We have a motion and a second. Please register your vote. Passes with Councilmember Arp voting against. Item number 12 on the agenda is the deceleration lane on northbound Denton Highway. Mr. Eisen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Earlier this year, the city council had asked the staff to develop some cost figures for making some improvements to the medians on Denton Highway in front of Straightway Drive. Earlier this year, the city council had asked the staff to develop some cost figures for making some improvements to the medians on Denton Highway in front of Straightaway Drive. Council will recall that Straightaway Drive is in the Iron Horse West subdivision, and that currently, when people leave that subdivision on Straightaway Drive, they're unable to turn left because of the configuration of the median. So, earlier this year, the Texas Department of Transportation agreed to let the city make some modifications to the median to, so that persons leaving that subdivision could turn left or right onto Denton Highway. The stipulation was that all of that improvement would have to be done at the city's expense. Recently, a member of the council has asked that we also look at the possibility of constructing a deceleration lane in the northbound lanes of Denton Highway for persons turning into the subdivision. In looking at the cost of accomplishing that, the cost of that deceleration alone is approximately twice the cost of the original project, in effect, it would triple the cost of the overall project. And given the, the cost factors involved here, it would be our recommendation to you that we do not proceed with that deceleration lane at this particular point in time, but that we include that project as part of the budget process this year. And, and if it indeed turns out to be a high priority of the council during that budget process, we would then provide for it in the next annual operating budget, which will take effect October 1st.
Thank you. Counsel, we're in line for motion. Councilmember Quinones?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move that we, that we look in, that we not authorize any of this deceleration lane, as mentioned in the item, and that we possibly consider it in the budget, though in my opinion, it's not something that's gonna be a high priority.
Thank you. Councilmember Henselain?
I just wanna make a comment, since I was the one that requested staff to look into this issue, and this was brought up by some of the citizens that live there in the, in that particular area, talking about the problem of turning into Straightway Drive and having folks frastly approach from behind, going northbound, and ask what this feasibility of doing this was, and that's what this was, an exercise in the feasibility of having this done. So, I would second the motion that we take a look at it, and if the funds are available in this year's next coming budget, that we find a way to do it, if we can.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Please register your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item number thirteen is on the current status of the municipal court, and I believe Judge Bino is here somewhere? Where? Right here.
I apologize, I'm new to this. Do I need to introduce myself first and say, address in the record?
Please.
Okay. My name's Jack Bino, Judge, Halton City Municipal Court, address thirty-five hundred five, Boxwood, in Grapevine.
Please be specific, and please be brief.
Okay. Well, I'm happy to talk about as much of this as you'd like, out here or in executive session, whatever suits you as far as keeping things moving as quickly as possible. Basically, we have a resolution that was passed last February, which doesn't make a lot of practical sense for the way the court needs to be run. I've given each of you a copy of this already.
Yes, council has a copy?
Okay. And I won't go through the whole thing, but I'll go through the highlights of the things I think are a problem and what need to be changed. I also gave you a proposed resolution. I don't mean this to be set in stone, it's just simply my idea of how I think we can resolve some of this, and of course, that's open for change as well. Okay. On item number one A of the resolution that's already in place, it specifically says that the judge shall hold seven dockets on five days per month with a minimum of one hundred cases per docket. The problem here with this resolution is nowhere throughout does it ever describe what a docket is, or what will happen with the cases on that docket. If you're running the municipal court, like the previous judge did, where you didn't have window fines and you had everyone coming to court that got a ticket, it would not be a major issue to have a hundred people come through here. But you start having problems when you wanna have, when defendants want to have something like a trial, okay? What if a hundred people said, "I wanna have a jury trial." I can't have a hundred people come in here for a jury trial on the same day. I can't, no judge can get through a hundred jury trials in one sitting. Okay? It's not practical for the types of things that need to exist. If you had some property hearing, for example, common situation in Halton City, house gets robbed, items somehow end up in a pawn shop. The pawn shop owner has good title to the property, but so does the original owner. We have to make a decision as a judge who's gonna get the property. But the point is, you have to have a hearing for this, and that hearing typically will take about twenty minutes for one person. That's three people in an hour, that's thirty-three hours to have a hundred people on that docket. It's not sensible. Looking at this, I think what the council intended was just to make sure that a minimum standard was being established in order to get through all those people who got new tickets each month. I think, is that a fair statement? Okay. Well, my proposal is simply, we reworded, as it says in number one A of my proposal, "Hold as many dockets, one day per week, as is reasonably necessary, in order to accommodate those persons who received a citation during the preceding calendar month." We're taking out of the equation how many people, and that's in the judge's discretion, based on the type of docket it needs to be. And there's just a lot more dockets than simply someone getting a ticket and coming in and saying, "Judge, here's my proof of insurance." You have bond forfeiture hearings, you have probation revocation hearings, you have jury trials, you have non-jury trials, you have evidentiary hearings, you have property hearings. There's a lot of other things going on besides this juvenile dockets, for example. You probably, the judge probably spent more time talking to juveniles, you know, explaining about what's going on with their situation and having to deal with the parent than they would with just, you know, an adult defendant coming into court, just 'cause they don't understand. So, these are things that need to be taken into consideration.
Excuse me, Judge, if I could just interrupt you for a moment. That's, that's point A.
Yes.
On your proposal.
Yes.
Let me address a council question at this moment.
Okay.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I was wondering, how many jury trials have we had in the city of Halton City in the last six months?
None.
No jury trials whatsoever?
But I'd also like to point out, I haven't been here for six months, I've only been here for three weeks.
Can you, could you tell the council how many people you have requesting jury trials at this time?
Right. My understanding is, it's been a year, is that right? One, yeah. Five years? All right. Well, our, our core coordinator, in the year she's been here, there's never been a jury trial. We have sixty-one people who, prior to my taking the bench, have requested jury trials that didn't get them, and that some of them date back, you know, fairly far. Sixty-one may not sound like a lot to you, but when you're doing a jury trial, the reality is, if we're lucky, we'd get through two a day. So, you're talking about a month's worth of jury trials, thirty days' worth. What I've done is I've set them all for a special pre-trial docket, in the hopes that some of them will reach a settlement agreement with the prosecuting attorney, and it'll weed them down. My experience in other courts is that that tends to happen. What we'll probably see is about ten of those people really wanting to go through with a jury trial, or in other words, about five days, or one calendar month's worth of jury trials if we had them once a week.
Thank you.
Hope that answers that question.
Does that answer your concerns?
Well, I, I know you can't speak for what went on before you became judge, but as a lawyer in the past, you've been involved with municipal court, what would be the reasoning behind postponing these, these jury trials, other than that it would take up docket time? I mean, aren't people, don't they have the right to, to fair trial and a speedy trial?
Absolutely. I mean, I don't see a good reason that they didn't occur, but that's, the fact is, they hadn't, so we need to clean up this mess. And that's just jury trials. There's also, you know, several months' worth of people who didn't get their bench trial, but bench trials are easier because not having to call a jury and avoid dire jury, that's when lawyers actually have to question jury members, and it just takes a significant amount of time to go through that. With a bench trial, we could, I could move them through a lot quicker, you know, just one trial after another. Did you have a question, councilman?
Councilmember Williams, do you have a question on that subject?
Well, I'm saying with the, everything you covered in A, you covered property a while ago, you said you had the property hearing?
Yes, sir.
Have we been having property hearings?
I think the coordinator can better answer that.
We have one about every quarter, we usually have one.
And how much property we have on backlog?
I probably could not answer that very accurately. The police department really doesn't. They, they only give me the information to those.
Excuse me, if we're going to question her, we need to ask her to step to the microphone.
I feel like the police department could probably better answer that. They only give me the information about those hearings that need to be held. I usually get about, I'd say, anywhere from six to ten cases in which we hold a hearing every quarter. I don't know how much property other than that would be beyond.
Okay, I know in our, in our pre-budget that we did earlier, one of the items asked for by the police department was additional storage for this property, and I was wondering how long it takes to actually.
I think that's a different issue. What you're referring to is the property that came into the possession of the police through different means. For example, they took something into their possession incident to an arrest.
Right.
And that could be anything from weapons, to beanie babies, to, you know, furniture, could be anything.
Yeah, I'm not talking about pawn shop.
Right.
I'm talking about stuff through, through accusation, through, through arrest.
One of the officers approached me last week, and he told me that he had a stack of papers for me to sign disposing of the property. You know, the origin, the owners couldn't be, legitimate owner couldn't be found, or it was something that was legitimately police prop, police, in police custody now and needed to be destroyed, and would I sign off on them? So, I stopped by his office, and he gave me a stack about, about seven inches tall. And that's, each one of those is, you know, some other item of property, and I had to look through him and sign.
Is that exaggeration or?
I'm not exaggerating. And then he followed up by saying, "If I came by every day, I could probably get through them in about five months." What, what happened was, in the last five years, nothing had ever been disposed of, ever.
Property-wise.
Property-wise. That won't take a significant amount of time in terms of, like, do we need double dockets or something? But that's just something a little extra I have to do each day when I come in, more than I would normally have to do. And frankly, I had, I've just put it off till now, till I talked to you, 'cause I wanted you to be aware of what we're talking about.
Madam American?
Yes, is there anything else?
If we did that, could we expedite that and have a property sale and create us some more space to put more property in?
That's a question for someone other than myself.
Well, I'm sure the chief is close by, and he could probably answer that.
I could take a shot at it. Certainly, we have a limited amount of space in the property room to actually store things. As the judge indicated, property comes into our possession through arrests, through people walking into the police department without property, and, and all sorts of different ways. I hate to disagree with the magistrate, but we have disposed of some property in the last five years, or we wouldn't have any place to put anything, we'd be storing it on top of the building. But we have had a significant problem over the last couple of years in dealing with particularly minor issues, class C-type issues, and that sort of things. A lot of times, property taken to district court is disposed of by the judge at the time of the, of the trial. In, say, a class A misdemeanor case or felony case, they often dispose of the property at the same time they dispose of the case. So, we have had some of that. In answer to your question, Mr. Williams, once the property is, is awarded either to us or to someone else, if it's awarded to us, it's either usually converted to police department properties, for instance, some weapons. In fact, some of the weapons that we disposed of recently have been converted to police department property, and then, in that case, were sold to others or disposed of if they're Saturday night special-type weapons, that sort of thing. Obviously, contraband, cocaine, marijuana, other narcotics cannot be released, and those have to be destroyed. So, there's, there's a lot of those different things that happen. The property that we don't have a use for, the city doesn't have a use for, is turned over to finance and is auctioned, along with other city property.
Thank you. I forget who was asking those questions. Councilmember Williams?
That was me.
That was you? Did you conclude?
Well, I was just wondering when we can sell that stuff and obtain more room, and how long it would take Judge Bino to, to sign the necessary papers and get with the chief and?
I'm, I'm sure I could do a significant amount each week, I just wouldn't wanna promise as to how many weeks, not knowing exactly how much there is out there.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And it was not my intention to mislead earlier, I'm only repeating what I'd been told as to how much and how it'd been distributed earlier. I think Mr. Henselain had a question?
Councilmember Quinones is first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Judge Bino, we talked, you know, a couple of times about this, and I understand the situation with property disposition about five years behind, and it's gonna take a while, and I agree, we, we've gotta clear that out. I think a lot of us know why that was the case, or at least have a good belief why that is. But I've looked through some of your proposal, and as I've talked to you, I think a couple of times, where we've talked about this before, I believe that at the time we passed this, that the council, it was my belief, that based on what we were advised, and it's my belief, we were in a position where we could give some minimum requirements for those who were running for the office that, this, this past May, and I think that's what we intended to do. And that's clearly what I had in mind.
Right.
When I voted for it and, and worked on it. I do hear some of what you've told me, not only privately, but what you've said tonight, and I think that if it would make you feel easier, part of your recommendations, as in, like, for example, D and E, and G are general enough that they cover, I think our previous resolution would have been sufficient, because that's what people expect the judge to do, and that's part of it. That's just, I mean, we may disagree on that, but I'm just saying, I believe that's what we do.
But it's, you say, people think that's what the judge is supposed to do, but if you're putting out a list of items that say what the judge shall do, and you don't put it there, then it's a not, if it's not there. I mean, I respectfully disagree with you on that.
Well, I know, we've talked about that, and I think we disagree, but I don't, I don't see any problem with this language being in there, is what I'm telling you.
Sure.
Because I see your point, and if it'll make it easier, we'll just put it in there.
I think so, I think maybe we should just tell the people who are watching what we're talking about, they, we're reading it, but they don't know what we're talking about.
Right, we're reading it, and I didn't wanna read it to them, 'cause I know how reading can, can bore them, but just being more specific on what some of the duties you have to do that involve, you know, giving arraignments, having jury trials, and all that kind of stuff.
And there's a lot of things that are, being a lawyer, I'm sure Mr. Olson could attest to this, my clients tend to think that I'm only working for them when I'm in court with them. And I think a lot of people think, have the same opinion about their judge, that he's only working when he's sitting on the bench. And there are, I just wanna point out, there are other things that are not listed in this A through D in the resolution that was passed, that are job duties of the judge. That, I'm just bringing that to your attention, nothing more.
Right, and, and as I mentioned to you when we talked about this, even though I think what we passed back in February, January, is still good and sufficient legally, I, I think it's a good faith effort to begin to start this off with the council and the court, that it would be good to adopt some of your recommendations that you're mentioning. I think that we need to do that, because quite frankly, from what you've told me, we have some real problems in the court, a lot of backlog, a lot of things that just were not done, and quite frankly, it needs to get done. And, and as I told you, I'm willing to take a step to adopt some of this in order to start off on good footing, and to do what I think is the right thing, and I'm gonna take you at your word that, that, that what you've told me you wanna accomplish is what you're gonna accomplish, and I'm willing to extend that to you.
Okay, thank you.
So, I, I say all this, 'cause I, I know what you're wanting to get to at this point, and I, for the purposes of time, I, I wanted to cut to that and go ahead and state my position right now on that.
Okay.
Councilmember Henselain?
Just had a general question. We talked about executive session, and are we pretty much gonna do all this now, item by item? Are we gonna do any of this in executive session? I just want everybody, as a council, to know, do we, you know, debate this, discuss this now?
I don't know what the council's pleasure is as far as doing this item by item. I could visualize you spending an awful lot of time.
Yes.
If we do that, I don't know if you want to do a nutshell-type thing, or if you want time to look at it and, and study it. You tell me what, what you prefer to do. In the meantime, let me get to Councilmember Arp.
Well, that was gonna be my suggestion, is, is that we had the original resolution in our packet, and we were just given the judge's proposal of a resolution just right whenever the meeting started today, and I was gonna suggest, maybe we, we let staff take a look at these and put them both together, and look at them at the next council session.
If I can, councilman.
Or something.
I, I'd just like to point out that the, on the proposal, the things that are in italics, those are the changes. If they're in regular print, there's no changes.
No.
Just for convenience sake, I, I didn't mention it earlier.
Yeah. Yeah, I understood that. Just that I haven't really had time to look at it, read it, and chew it over and think about it.
Mr. Olson, did you have a comment you wanted to make?
The comment I was gonna make regarding the executive session is, we are limited, as it is posted, to discuss the duties and compensation of the judge in executive session. If there are other issues regarding the administration of the court, we need to talk about them in public, but I just wanted to make the council aware of that. When we go into executive session, we'll be focusing on duties and compensation of the judge.
All right, thank you. It appears as though the consensus of, I've got several lights on, what I'm hearing is that you're wanting to take some time to, to look at these and have a chance to absorb them. Next in line would be Councilmember Jennings. Did you have another opinion other than that?
Just one point of clarification here. I noticed you said that the points in italics were proposed changes, and in some instances, I can see that this is just in wording. As far as overall compensation goes, you're proposing no change whatsoever to the base salary amount of the judge at this time, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
Mayor, if I could just point out one thing to you. While I haven't had the chance to talk with each councilman in private, I did have the opportunity to talk to four of you privately, ones that work locally, and, so, so four out of seven have had the opportunity to talk to me, including yourself, so there's, you know, five out of eight of you. to talk to me, including yourself. So there's, you know, five out of eight of you.
Fortunately, I can't vote for them.
I understand. But, so not, I mean, I didn't have a chance to talk to Councilman O and B, Arp, or Hensling, I believe. But everyone else I did talk to, including the city manager and the city attorney.
Councilmember Markham?
Mayor, I was just going to say that I, you know, I've had a chance to visit with the judge on occasions. Couple of what he's had to work with since he came on board, what he was faced with, what he's had to come up against. I concur with his recommendations, and I think this council ought to approve those. I'll put that in the form of a motion.
All right. I will come back to you, and you'll have that privilege as soon as we do. One, two, three more. We'll start with Councilmember Williams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember already got on to me before I opened my mouth down there, when he was referring to the salary. And we cannot discuss the salary or anything until we go into...
No, I'm sorry, that's not what I'm saying.
We can.
What I'm saying is, when you go into executive session, there's only two items you can discuss. That's the duties and compensation of the judge.
So I can just let her fly around?
You can talk about compensation and duties out here if you want to.
Okay.
Yeah, but I'm just limiting you on what you can talk about in private session.
Are you being paid yet?
Not what I'm, depends, that's debatable. That's part of what we need to talk about today.
Are you being paid weekly, monthly, or...
Well, state statute and the city charter provide that the judge is supposed to be paid a salary. And the council has stated that that should be 34-250, which I have no questions about that, no problem about that. But there seems to be a discrepancy somewhere between, I'm told by some councilmen, that back in February, that was their understanding of what was to occur. But I'm also being told by the city manager that he was under the impression it was supposed to be an itemization, which is listed in number two, A through D, of the resolution already in place. So my suggestion is simply that we follow what state statute, as well as the city charter itself says, and that the salary be a salary and not an itemization.
Excuse me one second. Mr. Eisen has a comment he'd like to make.
Only to say that Judge Bino is exactly correct. My understanding of what the council's action was in February was that you wanted to do an itemized compensation method. And with that understanding, I've indicated to the judge, I really feel like with those instructions from the council, that's all we can do at this point at the staff level. But I certainly have no objection to going through a salary-type situation. And I wouldn't want to give the impression that I have some problem with that. I don't.
And if I can, this is where I'd like to address Councilman Quinones. He was saying that these items in A through G of my proposal weren't really necessary, but he was willing to go along with them. I would point out that they are necessary, because under the current resolution, if you're itemizing, I'm not getting paid for things like the property resolutions, or jury trials, or bench trials. You expect the judge to do them, but you don't have any sort of pay scale for that if you're itemizing.
I certainly don't want to call the judge down, but I wasn't through yet.
Okay, I apologize.
What I was getting at, back, Mr. Eisen made the comment, back in February, we discussed, we knew there was election coming up. We knew that we were probably going to have a new judge. There was some discussion as far as what compensation would be, like if we had to have a docket, if we had to have someone come over and do a arraignment. And basically, now, council can correct me if I'm wrong, but we were just kind of wanting to set a guideline, sort of a, for instance, of what we would pay. I believe if we had to pay a visiting judge or something, or come up with something. In other words, last year, we were having to add some dockets to take care of some overflow we had. Well, we were having a problem really coming to agreement of what that should be. And I believe that when I asked for this back in January or February, that I'd like to have something just that we could base this on. I don't think, what I'd asked for, I don't believe, was just an itemize of what the judge should be paid. It was just sort of a guideline for if we had to pay to have this compensation done, what we would be doing. We knew that the salary of the judge would be X amount of dollars per year. And we knew that we'd have so many dockets per month. I think at that time, I said 75 on a docket, and I think they finally come up with 100 on a docket. Of course, I respect what you say, you know, 100 cases on a docket. You know, if you've got 100 inspection stickers or 100 seat belts, you can probably do that on a docket. But if you've got DWIs, or if you've got something like that, then you're not going to be able to do 100 of those on a docket.
Right.
What we basically set this up in February to do was have a guideline to know what these varieties would pay. No, I don't think when a councilor wrote these, or the city manager got with him on this, that that's all we want our judge to do, was just arraignments in four or five dockets. Am I right, or am I, then we want guidelines for, we knew the judge's salary was going to be 34-250 a year.
Yeah, and I recall there being some conversation in the early stages to that effect, and that could have very well been your intent, Councilmember Williams. When Judge Bino first raised the issue with me, I went back and looked at the resolution, and it looked pretty explicit to me that it states compensation for these functions shall be as follows, and it states a specific amount per court docket and a specific amount for arraignments. And it could be, this is one of those cases, that what your original intent was may have evolved with the discussion. But the documents I read it is pretty specific and says that the compensation has to be this. And that's what I felt was in the discretion I had.
I agree with Bill Eisen, the way it says.
Respecting that, then, then we're not paying, we don't have anything for other than just the docket and the arraignment, if we have any...
And it doesn't specify what type of docket.
Right.
I would suggest to you that the scale you have here is fine if you have a substitute judge sitting in, and all he's going to do is a docket that day or an arraignment that day. But it doesn't take into consideration the out-of-courtroom activities at all that the normal sitting judge would have to deal with from day to day.
How does a normal city employee, how are they paid? Are they paid bi-weekly, or...
Every other week is.
Every other week?
Depending on if the employee is an hourly employee or a salaried employee, they're either paid based upon the number of hours that they work, or the salaried amount, assuming that they...
Well, on a salary, say it, like your salary, it's divided by...
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. Is that what we would do with the judge's salary? Would we divide it by, is that what we should be doing?
That's what the judge is proposing. That's what was done before, prior to the passage of the resolution in February.
Should he be paid any different than the other employee that we have? Should we pay him every two weeks?
As I indicated earlier, it really doesn't make any difference to me if you pay on the basis of a salary or on the basis of this. But given the action of the council that I had in front of me, I really didn't feel like I could authorize paying on the basis of a salary, because that's not my reading of what was done. Now, if I'm reading it wrong, I'm coachable, but...
Item three says he gets paid 34-250 per year, maximum compensation.
Maximum. And the term maximum was used because in item number two, there's a specific dollar amount for each of the functions, like court dockets are $200 for each day in which 100 or more cases are set. And I understood that pretty emphatically to mean that every day there's a, on which a docket or more than one dockets are held, the judge will be compensated $200 for that. And every day that he comes in to do arraignments, there'd be a compensation of $50 for that. But again, if the council's desire is to go to a salary-type situation, I have no objection to that whatsoever.
I would suggest you pay him just like you do any other city employee, which says maximum compensation, unless additional activity and compensation is approved.
Yeah, and...
Now, that's if we have to have extra dockets or something.
Yeah. And an amendment to that resolution, or an amended resolution, would take care of that pretty quickly, whether it is the resolution that the judge has submitted or some version of it. I think that would clarify and rectify that situation.
If I could, I've addressed that in my proposal in items number two, three, and four. Two, simply stating that compensation for the functions above shall be 34-250 per year. The municipal court judge is a salaried position, therefore, the judge shall be paid 13.17 and 31 cents bi-weekly on the same day that all other Halton City employees are paid. And then three and four, rather, run together.
Right.
The compensation set forth is the maximum for the judge unless additional activity and compensation is approved in advance by the council. And then compensation for additional activities will be as follows. In A, B, and C, I just used the numbers you had on two A through D. I didn't change the map. I didn't come up with this on my own. I...
I want to throw something out, gentlemen. I've had, a couple of you have said you want to have time to look at this, and Mr. Councilmember Markham is prepared to make a motion. Is, and I have three lights on. What is it you'd like to do? Shall we, do you want to plunge ahead?
I think we've just about covered all of it, to be honest. I mean, there's not a whole lot more unless you have specific questions for me.
And he does want to make, Councilmember Markham does want to make a motion, so it's his right to be able to do that. But I just want everybody to be aware of where we are. Do you want me to continue with your lights? Are you ready for a motion? How would you like to play this?
I'd like some more discussion. I mean, I'd like us to let us all talk about it, because this is going to be a substantial change in the minds of many people. I think we need to say what's on our mind and get a vote on it.
Is everyone open for that?
Yeah, and I don't think you'll take that alone.
All right. Then the next, I'm sorry, were you through, Councilmember Williams? Did you have some more you wanted to?
I said I'd be brief. I'm not going to say another word.
Then Councilmember Hensling, you're next.
I think there were some comments made in terms of, you know, good faith, and I definitely want to, ditto that, I hate to use that term, but good faith effort to make our municipal court more efficient and get it back on track, most definitely. But I do have a couple of concerns, or questions, and this is mainly for city manager Bill Eisen. This may be a dumb question, too. The items in two, A through D, if you take those dollar figures for court dockets, arraignments, teen court dockets, et cetera, and you look at the minimum number of dockets that we had specified, did those numbers add up to the 34-250?
Actually, I think they end up slightly less than that, with the idea in mind that there may be an occasional additional docket that you'd want to have.
So there's a little room for movement there, but that was the intent.
Yeah, not very much. I think it's 100 or $200 under.
If I can, I'd point out to you that some of the things not listed there, that ought to be listed there, is I'm subject to getting phone calls at 2:00 a.m. in the morning to come down here and sign warrants for the police, things like that, that are not in this itemization, that if you consider those things, they're, I believe they're relevant.
Okay. I just want to understand that it was an itemization, so the itemization was there to provide the minimum criteria to project out the salary. So in that, in the revised proposal, the figures are identically the same, but for a different reason. It's for when someone comes in and resides in case of an absence or et cetera. So we've thrown out the intent of what the itemization is all about, if I'm making any sense. And it's not going to be any minimum criteria, et cetera. My overall concern, and our city attorney has said, if we need to talk about administrative-type items regarding our municipal court, we need to do that now in open public, not in executive session, since it's not part of the posted agenda. And we asked a bunch of questions about how often have we had requests for jury trials? I think you said 61.
Sixty-one. I know it doesn't sound like a lot, but I think that's a question you ought to ask your city attorney, as to how big that really is. Now, he's, you know, as a former prosecutor, he knows just how many that is.
Sure. But my question really is to Melissa, our municipal court. And why I'm hesitant to make a decision tonight is because I would like to see a percentage breakdown of the type of items that would go on a docket. We talked about what is a docket. Well, we think we've got 100 inspection stickers or 100 seat belts. Is it still legitimate to say we want to still have a minimum number of cases that we would see through a docket? And we've lost that teeth or that terminology here by saying as reasonably as necessary.
Can I respond to that, before you move on to something else? I don't believe that's true, because if you look at my number 1A, I give you that teeth you're looking for. Hold as many dockets one day per week as is reasonably necessary in order to accommodate those persons who received a citation during the preceding calendar month. I'm telling you, I'm going to get everything done. If something, if someone gets a ticket in May and they want a court date, I'm going to give them a court date in June. So if it's one person, it's one person. If it's 1,000 people, it's 1,000 people. I'm going to get them all in. If I have to have one docket, I'll have one docket. If I have to have 10, I'll have 10. But I'll do as many as reasonably necessary. For those people who receive their citation this month, I'll get them in next month. I need 30 days, you know, to set court dates appropriately.
Sure, okay.
So you have that teeth you're looking for, I believe. It doesn't matter if it's what type of citation it is. They will all get their day in court.
Okay. I guess the question is, and I, I mean, I agree with you that the good faith would be there, but in terms of setting up this ordinance and what we're doing here, I mean, we're writing this in stone, irregardless of who our judge is. And someone's interpretation of that might be different, what's reasonably necessary. And I take you at your word, Judge Bino, that you would do what is reasonably necessary to expedite matters. But I'm just, I think long-term, I think what needs to be in place, long-term. So that's one quick question I have. And to support that question, that's why I was going to ask Melissa, I would love to see some supporting information in terms of the number of cases that are out there, citations to support, say, a minimum number of dockets. And kind of go back to some, we have our hands around something, so.
Well, are you asking me approximately how many cases can come up in a month? For instance, the number of citations that are written that can come to court per month? Well, we have approximately, let me look here, on average, about 1,200 a month that are issued. October, there was about 1,600, then it drops to November to 1,000. So, I mean, gauge on average, I'd say about 1,200 citations or violations, actually, a month that can come to court.
And we were talking about, I guess previously, that we were talking about a minimum number of 100 items on a docket. With five dockets a month, that's 500 items, is that...
Actually, it was 700 per month.
Okay, seven dockets at a minimum of 100, so that's 700 items. So that's a month and a half worth of backlog right there that you mentioned, 1,200, if, so.
I would also point out to you, I'm sure you're not aware of it, or maybe you are aware of it, that I've put window fines back in place, and that alone is alleviating a great number of people needing to come to court.
Okay.
Not only have I put the window fines back in place, but I'm allowing people to ask for and receive probation if they qualify at the window as well.
Differ adjudication.
Differ adjudication, absolutely.
Right.
And, you know, I've tried to make it as hassle-free as possible. I'm allowing people to mail in those requests as well, so they don't have to actually come to the window in person. The mailing is good enough, so long as it is received timely.
Okay. I just want to get a flavor for what's happened administrative, and that's good, I know the court, I mean, the window fines is going to make the biggest impact in the court. I was just trying to get a flavor for, you know, I'm, personally, I'm a little uneasy with as reasonable as necessary, but I'm willing to extend some goodwill here, too, as well. I just wish I had more I could get my hands around for long-term.
If I could point out one other thing. In the long-term, what I foresee is this: three dockets per day, an 1:00 a.m. docket and two 1:00 p.m. dockets. If I put 51 people per docket, this is just math, but if there were 51 people on an average docket, and you multiply that by 4.5 weeks in a month, and I say .5 because some weeks we have five, some months we have five weeks, some months four, it turns out to be 700 also. Okay?
Okay.
So as a practical matter, that's already built in, that we're getting, you're getting the same number of people on a docket, so long as I have 51. And that's not really people, that's cases. I misspoke myself.
Sure. Well, let me ask you, Judge, would you be willing to put that wording in this document?
Well, the problem with putting it in writing is we come back to the whole thing about what kind of dockets do we have?
Right.
Jury trials. How many people can I put on a jury trial? Probation revocations. People are entitled to have a hearing on that. If they have a hearing, and let's just say the average hearing takes 15 minutes, I mean, let's just say it's that quick, that's only four people in an hour. I'm not going to be here for, there's not 25 hours in a day. Can't be done.
That was, was, I was asking Melissa about how many times. I'd like to see some supporting material to see how often that happens, and if that's just a minute part of the time.
The problem is, there's nothing to show you, because there's never been a revocation hearing. There's never been a bond forfeiture hearing. There's never been a lot of these hearings. All you've had...
I'll let her finish.
Well, just to try to answer what you're saying, typically, what we have done is bench trials, which is a trial before a judge, and property hearings, which were ones a quarter, and then, of course, our normal plea dockets. What needs to be done are bond forfeiture hearings, which are people who have been in jail. They hire bail bondsman to put up a bond for them. Typically, what happens now, they come to court, if the person does not show up to court, we just reissue the warrants. What could happen is a bond forfeiture hearing in which we could collect the money from that bail bondsman and reissue the warrant for that person. And it would also cut down on some time that the girls in my office are, keep having to reissue, and it's a lot of paperwork that may not have to be done. Jury trials, we've never had. That's an additional thing we need to have. Pre-trial hearings to try to cut down on the number of people that are selecting, are saying that they're not guilty, and then they actually get to court and decide that they want to make a deal. That should cut down on that. We also have an issue of tickets that have not been signed, in which the past judge has not allowed us to issue warrants on. Well, that's 275 right there that we need to try to have a docket for, just to try to clear up our files, to get them out of there. So we're talking about five or six new types of dockets, not all of which have to be held monthly compared to three that we used to have. So we're talking about a significant amount that needs to be done.
Okay. So if I could just add to that, the point, part of the point is, if I can, through window fines and offering probation at the window, cut down on the number of people who need to come to court to show their proof of insurance, and, you know, please cut me a little slack on that, because I can do it at the window, I have more time to spend with the people who need true court time, you know, where there's the bigger types of cases. For example, Melissa mentioned the bond forfeiture hearings. I've only done four dockets so far, and in that time, we had four or five people who had bail bondsman put down a bond for them, and those defendants did not show up in court. So I can revoke their bond and issue a warrant for them because they didn't show. But here's the thing, the bail bondsman charged these people a significant amount... But here's the thing, the bail bondsman charged these people a significant amount of money. One of them was an $1,800 bond. Person didn't show up. This is not about revenue. We need to hold that bail bondsman responsible because he didn't have his client show up in my court. He owes this city $1,800, or something there or less. That's not going to happen if I don't have a bond forfeiture here. That's not going to happen if I have to have 100 people per docket, because I'm never going, in two years, I'm not going to have, I hope I don't have 100 of those in two years. But in the long run, that'll probably weed out. Cities that are active on their bond forfeiture hearings, word gets around to the bail bondsman real quick, and then the bail bondsman tend to make sure their clients show up for court, and thereby we dispose of cases, and thereby there's less work for the clerks and me and everyone all the way around. So there's a lot of dockets like this we need to be having, but I can't tell you how many people we'll have on a docket. Some of these dockets will just need to hold quarterly. I suspect that'd be one type of them. Probation revocations, we can probably hold quarterly. I wouldn't want to commit myself now, I've only been here a couple of weeks, but I'm just basing this on what other municipal courts do.
Okay. You also, another type of docket that you talked about earlier was code compliance, code enforcement type issues.
Yes.
Were you still intending to have some sort of docket?
Absolutely, but with those, I would, on some of them, I think we can just mix right in. For example, we had a case where this man was not treating his dogs, or he's accused of not treating his dogs as properly as he should, and Animal Control went out there and got the animals, and his ticket came right up, and he wanted to plead not guilty, so he's being set for a trial now.
Okay.
But I don't see any reason they can't be mixed in with the regular citations. I mean, he either wants to plead guilty or not guilty. If he wants not guilty, we're back to the trial situation.
Okay.
Looks like a Christmas tree up here.
Anything else?
That's all I have. I just, I was trying to get a feel from Melissa where we're at. Just, I'd like to see more on paper as far as the numbers, the backlog, the type of cases, the percentage, so I can make a more intelligent decision about whether this is the right one.
I think if, when we sit down in an executive session...
Well, that's what I was asking earlier, if we're going to debate it now in an executive session, and we're going to do it now, and that's...
I think we're doing it.
Okay.
I don't mind doing it open, I don't care one way or the other.
Councilmember Rowanby?
Thank you. I'll turn on my microphone now. In the time allotted, I have been able to read through all the...
More than once.
Watch it.
More than once.
And I wrote down a few basic questions and some answers that I think fit, and before I did, my time, I'm going to take a little bit of time to just tell you this, I've got three different kids, three different ages, okay, and no reference to the kid intended. I don't judge any of them the same, they all stand on their own merit, okay? And I've always made sure of that, because each one's a different individual with different ideals, principles, and practices. Hopefully, some of them are similar. I think that has something to do with what our previous resolution, number R 199900903, was. It was all about intent. Our desire was to make sure that the intent of the previous, your predecessor, was to fulfill his duties and obligations.
Right.
And you've done nothing to show anything but intent to do that. That's what I've seen. We haven't had to visit, I feel good, okay?
Because we didn't visit?
The meeting we had in executive session indicated to me that you wanted to try and take care of business, okay? I made a note here, I said, "It is your intent to try and perform due diligence."
Absolutely.
Okay, which is what we're looking for, right? And all you're trying to do is find a means in which you can facilitate your programs.
That's right.
And continue to move the courts forward, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the only other thing I could see was, that I could even subject to at all, looking at all this, was, and I wrote down a little note here, too, y'all seen Jerry Maguire, he says, "Show me the money," okay? I'm sure everybody on here's seen it.
Yeah.
Half the people up here, because of the previous children, want somebody to show us the money.
Right.
That's not what the courtroom's about, okay? And I know you know that. However, I do know this, if you do perform due diligence, if you do get everything laid out in line where you can actually do facilitate the courtroom the way it needs to be facilitated, the money will come anyway. We, in the past, had to look at compensating somebody, and they were asking us to show the money first, and then they'd do the work.
Right.
And all you're asking us to do is allow me to do the work, and I'll show you that. And that's why I wanted to second the motion that Dwyer made, because I also pointed out to one of the council members over here, who Don and I have a great time together all the time, that if for any reason we pass this and we're 100% in agreement after this, you know what, we can come back and change it.
Well, I guess there's always an option.
I don't see what we're spending as much time on, but...
Well, if I could just make one...
Show.
I'd like, in kind of in response to that, I'd like to point out that, well, let me just ask this way, is it fair to say that most of you weren't satisfied with the previous judge, the way things went?
Reasonable.
I think this resolution actually gave him authority to do everything he wasn't doing.
Right.
Not have window fines. Well, how do you get 100 people on a docket? You don't have window fines, you make everybody come to court. Since it's not itemized, if you're going to pay itemized, and you're not apparently paying for jury trials, I don't do jury trials. Since you don't pay for not taking care of the property disbursement, or whatever term you'd like to give it over at the police department, I don't do that. I mean, you gave him authority to not do the things he wasn't doing. I know I'm speaking in double negatives, but this perfect, this outlines exactly what he was doing, and you said, "We don't expect any more than what you're doing. I think we can do better."
Right. I do have one other question.
Okay.
Will you at least hold court once a week if that?
Well, I've talked about that with Melissa, and I'm not opposed to having night court in principle for those people who are, can't get here.
Right.
But what we need to do is, there's a difference between being inconvenient and coming during the day, and if I lose my job if I come during the day. There's two different categories of people, and we've talked about this, and we've started putting a little paperwork together. People have the option, if they want to plead guilty, or seek probation at the window. So that's easy.
Right.
So what we're talking about is people calling us up and saying, "Hey, I can't come during the day, can I come at night?" Well, what we want to do is say, send us something in writing, so we have a clean written record, and then we'll send them back a pamphlet basically saying, you know, questioning, when do they have to work, what is their income status, things of that nature. Because frankly, most attorneys will only charge $35 to come to court. So what I'm asking is that they show me that they can't afford the $35, and for those people, I would certainly take that into consideration, but I don't see that as something we have to do every week.
Right.
The number of people that would fit into that category is probably more like on a quarterly basis.
It's a question of hardship.
It's a question of hardship, not inconvenience. There's a real difference there.
To kind of address that also, we're thinking about people that are inconvenienced during the day. With all due respect, there are many people who work during the night, and we had questions for, well, is there not a day court? So I think either way we go, there's so many different time periods that people work now, we're really not going to be able to please everybody.
I'd agree with Melissa, although I think the majority's still working the daytime.
Yeah, well, but if I could just add to that, too, my intent is to have an AM docket and two PM dockets anyway, so that will help quite a bit in that regard, as opposed to just night or just day. And again, the way it's been set up now, we're just filling dockets. That's totally, we don't look at anything as to where these people work or when they work. It's just like, okay, we have to fill up the 2 o'clock docket, now let's fill up the 6:30 docket, now let's fill up the 8 o'clock docket. Has nothing to do with who's working, when, and where. So it's not the way you, it's not working the way you had intended anyway.
Right.
And I think if you give me the leeway I'm asking for, we'll get the people who need to be at night, in at night.
You got to hear this, yes, go ahead.
Does that conclude? Councilmember Keanonis?
Couple of things. You mentioned, Judge Bino, that you're not suggesting that this ordinance was the reason why the judge took away the window fines and all that. You're not saying that, are you?
I believe he took away the window fines before this ordinance took place.
And that this is...
I'm just saying this justifies it.
The way you said it, we didn't cause him to do those things, right?
No, 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 I didn't mean that at all. I just meant, I simply meant that he can use, if he were here, he could look at this and say, "You're justifying my actions."
Right. And like we talked about, we were, at the time, we were looking at the number of cases we were having to cover and the additional dockets we were funding, and that was part of the reason why we were, we included that calculation in our numbers. Looking at A here, I mean, in our, in our resolution, we had five days per month, which roughly comes from just about, you know, one day a week. I mean, it's probably a little, little less.
Sure.
Yours is a little less, but that's fine.
But I looked at the math both ways. You come up with a total of 700, and I anticipate the average docket size would be about 50, 51 people, and if I'm holding three dockets per day, 4.5 days per month, it's 700. It comes out the same math. It's just a matter of distributing it different.
Right. And I got to relate this to you, because it happened to me, and I mentioned this to you a while ago before the meeting. There was a time when, when, when people were led to believe that there was going to be a runoff situation, and then we were told that that was going to happen because the law didn't allow it, even though that was not the impression unanimously by everybody. And the idea was, well, you should have known about it beforehand. You know, you should have known about it, blah, blah, blah. And I said, "That's fine, I agree, I should have looked at it closer than I did." And the same thing could be said here, but I, as I told you before, I'm not going to hold that, and I'm not going to do that to you, because I think, as I mentioned in the very first comments, that I do want us to start off right and get this docket cleared out.
Oh, I agree, that's why I'm here today.
And not only that, not only that, I think you brought to light, and I think many of us were aware, of a lot of things that were not done, were never done, and were never intended to be done by the previous court, and I think the citizens expect that, and that's why we put together this resolution, because we wanted to give the citizens something which they minimally expected from the court.
Right.
And I think from what you're telling us, you've assured us, and I believe the people that you intend to do that, and I'm willing to go along with that. So rather than belabor the point, I, you know, I'm ready to go ahead and vote on the motion. One other thing I would clarify, though, is that on this compensation, that it's not considered a full-time position or a employee of the city, that that's not your intent, is that correct? That you're not to be considered an employee of the city?
Only in the sense that I'm a salaried position. Judge is a difficult position to be in as compared to counsel.
But in terms of just getting time...
It's a quasi-employee. In terms of being paid, I'm an employee, but it's my understanding this is not a full-time position, if that's your question.
Okay, but you don't consider this to be an employee position under the law? I mean, we've had that debate a few years back.
Judges are, they're in a class by themselves, and I don't know how to answer that question. It's just a quasi-employee. I'm an elected employee is the best way I can put it.
I guess what I'm saying is, is I'd like that paragraph two to be clarified, that it's not an employee, to the, you know, if it means being paid on the same days as the employees, that's fine, but in terms of classification as an employee of the city...
Oh, I see what you're saying. So your question is the word "other." We just scratched the word "other." The judge, if I could just skip down halfway through the sentence, "On the same day that all other Haltem City employees are paid..."
I would just add that if you...
That all Haltem City employees are paid.
Did you just get paid on the same pay schedule as other, as Haltem City employees?
That's just verbiage, I mean, that's not...
Well, I understand, but I want to be clear, that was not your intent.
It's not my intent.
Okay.
Councilmember Arp? Gentlemen, your lights keep coming on.
I don't mind. I'm glad to be given the opportunity to talk with everyone.
Most of it's been answered. One of my concerns was, is I was thinking that we should have an evening court, but you said that you were going to work with people, and if they truly needed it, that you'd work with them. And my other concern was, is it said here that you would sign warrants during normal business hours, but then you also used the example that if you had to, you'd sign one at 2:00 in the morning.
Absolutely.
Those are my two main concerns, and everybody with me starts off with a clean slate, and I'm willing to give you a shot.
I think Chief Burke could probably tell you, I've been coming by every day, bothering the police, you know, seeing, got anything for me today?
I was wanting to have time to look it over, but I've had more than ample enough time, so I'm ready to vote on this, too.
Councilmember Jennings?
I would just like to agree with Councilmember Williams, I believe it's all been said, and when time comes to vote, I'm ready to vote.
Councilmember Markham?
Mayor, I again reinstate my motion as stated.
John's going to second it, that's why his lights...
I did have one more light, I'm sorry, and that would be Councilmember Williams. And then we're going to Councilmember Markham.
I timed this out just right. Mr. Markham just made his motion, didn't he?
He wants to make a motion, but as long as I have a light on, I have to...
He made his motion.
I have, do you have anything to add, other than to tell me he made a motion?
No, I'm waiting, I'm waiting for him to make his motion.
All right. It's all yours.
Mayor, I...
Wait, excuse me, I just lied. Mr. Eisen has to make a comment first.
Well, I don't have to, but...
Yes, he has to.
Just with regard to the resolution itself, and Judge Bino and I have talked about some language that I have some minor concern with, and that's in Section 1E, the second half of that, as well as supervise and instruct the clerks of the court. My only observation there is that the city charter and the ordinance that create the court of record make reference to the clerks of the court working under the general direction of the city manager, and I think this would probably be in conflict with those provisions as a practical matter. I know that there is some...
I think the answer to that question is coming after this legislative session, though. I think someone mentioned to me, maybe it was even you, well, maybe not, that there's a resolution, I believe, before the state legislature as to who the clerks work for in this regard, and that question will soon be answered.
And that may very well be.
But it's sort of a quasi-relationship, I mean...
Yeah, as a practical matter...
As matters of running the court, I think there should be under the supervision of the judge, but in terms of being city employees, and when they're working, how they're working, that type of thing, I believe it should be under the city manager.
Clearly, it's a shared responsibility.
There's some overlap there.
And I think Judge Bino and the staff have worked very well in these last few weeks, and I see absolutely no reason that won't continue. My only concern is, I think perhaps the way this is worded, it may contradict the existing charter and the existing ordinance, and...
Perhaps the word supervise should be struck and just leave instruct?
Yeah, could be, yeah, as well as instruct the clerks of the court and delete supervise. I wouldn't have any problem with that, because again, I realize that...
I have no conflict with striking struck.
So we're striking the second...
Strikes supervise, but leave instruct, is that a...
You could even put advise and instruct, and you're still not supervising, you're giving advice.
There you go. I think that's a good recommendation. I think that's a good recommendation. I like that, too.
Did you get that, Mr. Markham, for your motion?
Yes, Mayor, I did.
It is all yours now.
Mayor, I would then like to make a motion to, excuse me. That we, I move that we pass this resolution with the items so stipulated that we change there. Number 1E as "advise," is that correct?
"Advise" and "instruct."
Uh huh.
Is that all right with everyone?
Correct.
Is that all the changes?
Number 2.
2.
Take out the word "other."
Yeah, on line 3.
On the last line there, remove the word "other." You have any problem with that?
No problem.
No more of that.
So moved. Councilmember Rowanby?
This would be for a very cheerful second.
Would you like to repeat that? Councilmember Williams?
One other question before we start. The salary, when are we going to start paying him? On the 13th ever by week, or?
As soon as you pass this resolution, and I assume that that will take effect with the next paycheck, which will come out Friday.
Good.
It will be for the full two weeks prior to that.
That's for a third, by my lunch.
Okay, a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Please register your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Judge. Thank you, gentlemen.
Well-
I think it's encouraging to see that we got a unanimous vote on that.
Oh, I agree 100 percent.
I told you that I think we needed to have that, so that was good.
But I did have something else I wanted to talk to you about that might still be better left in executive session.
You're through.
Yeah, you had your hour.
No, it has to do with the backlog in the court, and how to correct that as quickly as possible.
Yep.
If you, I don't care where we discuss it, but I would like to get that off.
It's, I don't-
That is a compensation, is it not? We should do that in executive session.
Yeah.
Would you answer this question? Do we need to go into executive session for?
I-
We don't have to.
I'd ask matters to discuss with the council in executive session.
I think the question was, the compensation issue has to be dealt with in executive session.
No, it doesn't have to.
It's not required to be dealt with in executive session, but-
It doesn't have to.
We certainly can, we've got it posted to discuss in executive session if the council wants to talk about it.
What is, is exactly you want to talk about at this point?
Okay. Well, when the previous judge was here, he was setting dockets out through the end of summer. And it's my intention to have dockets being set the month after people come in, as we talked about earlier. The fact is, though, we still have those 61 jury trials to deal with, as well as some other types of hearings which need to be done, and just your normal plea dockets that have to be done. I don't want to now suddenly be in this position where I'm saying, hey, look, you know, let's all talk about compensation, have double dockets now. But my suggestion is simply this. I would like to see the court being exactly where it ought to be, caught up, and do that as quickly as possible. But I've got to have, if I have 61 trials, you've got to understand, and I think Mr. Olson can verify for this for me, I don't think most of those people are going to go to trial, as I said earlier. But if they did, that's a good, if there were just two trials a day, jury trials, that's 30 days. And if we're talking about dockets being held once per week, that's the better part of a year, right there. Now, if I have to choose between doing those or keeping up with the current workload that's in the court, something's got to give. Something's going to be pushed back a year. So the only solution, then, is to get caught up as quickly as possible. And to do that, I would suggest, instead of having court once a week, just for, say, a 90-day period, so that this isn't going on forever, but for about a 90-day period, we authorize another one day a week on top of that in order to get caught up. And I'm sure the question will become, well, you know, how much is this going to cost us? Well, I would suggest using your own math that you had in the previous resolution under 2A. Court dockets, $200 per day. Because that's what we're talking about doing, is adding another day. And I'm not saying indefinitely, I'm just saying until we can get this caught up, and I'm not even leaving that open, I'm just saying, let's try it for 90 days, see where that leads us, and if need be, you know, we can reevaluate after 90 days how much longer we need.
Simply put, what you're saying is to catch up for a period of 90 days for an extra docket at-
200 per do-
$200 per docket.
Right.
Per what?
No, per day.
Could there be more than one docket?
Per day.
Right, per day.
How many dockets?
Councilmember Arp?
Okay, I guess, I guess one of my questions would be, is that since a lot of these people weren't offered window fines, could we go back and ask these people if they would like to pay the window fine, or would they like probation to try to cut those numbers down?
We can, but it's just a problem of people not coming in. Melissa can probably better answer what we've been doing with that so far.
Okay.
We have rescheduled some of last month's dockets already, in which, when we sent out the letters, we sent out an additional letter with it explaining that they can now come in, get probation through the counter. And we have seen, I'd say, a significant amount that are just coming in and paying and getting their probation over the counter. I think that dockets eventually will be cut down. There's a lot of things that we can now do at the window that could not be done before. For example, not guilty pleas used to have to go before the judge. We have a form, they can simply do that now at the counter. That's going to cut down on, I'd say, at least five or six people that normally would go to a docket and get a not guilty plea.
But to answer your question, some people, they have these court dates, and they're going to show up for those court dates, so we have to do something with them. I mean, they're already set, they were set by the previous judge.
We can send out letters to every person. Like I said, right now, it's just been to the ones that we have rescheduled, to offer them an alternative, because we realize it's a hardship, you know, they were scheduled the first time, then we're rescheduling them. It's an alternative, so they don't have to come back. We can send out letters, we have the capability to do that.
Councilmember, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Don.
I was just going to say, what are you looking at, then, as far as the extra number of dockets, then?
Well, let's see. Approximately, I think it's, well, three months, four a month, 4.5 per month on average. What is that? That's nine, 13 and a half dockets, 13, 14 dockets.
So you're looking at an extra day a week?
Yeah. Yeah. See, the problem is those jury trials, that's what you have to understand, some of these cases are getting pretty old, and people have a right to a trial. So what I've done is I've already set them for what's called a pre-trial docket, where it's their chance to come in and negotiate with the prosecutor, see if they can't work out a deal. And that's their last chance before it actually goes to trial. And there's, again, there's two types. There's the jury trials and the bench trials. The bench trials, I can get through fairly quickly, okay? But the jury trials are going to take time. And out of 61, I would anticipate we're going to have about 10 people go to trial. But the problem is, that's five real days. Five real days is one month of dockets. And if I take away the plea, the regular plea days where people are initially coming to court, something's got to give. That means I'm just pushing, I'm just putting something else back a month. I can't do both. Got to put one or the other, unless we do both, you know, in different days. And I'm not suggesting this goes on forever. I don't want to be here doing this two days a week if I don't have to. I'd rather do it once a week, but I want the court to be caught up to where it ought to be, so that, you know, in a few months down the road from now, I can say everything is just coming up next month, and that's it. None of this going on years on end.
Okay. I guess what I was going to, can we authorize extra dockets tonight? I guess this question would be the city manager.
You passed the previous resolution, so that would give you the authority to do it.
Right. But I was going to suggest, and I know there's probably some other people want to say something, I would suggest maybe let's look at sending letters out to people and seeing how many of these we can cut down, and maybe authorize maybe four for now, and then look at it later and do what else we need to do.
I anticipated that question, there's one practical problem with it. You've got to have about a month lead, a month lead time to set dockets. So we'd be leapfrogging. I don't mind leapfrogging, but I'm just telling you, that's going to slow the whole process down. I understand you're-
Four for now would get you through the next month.
It'd get me through the next month, but there's more than that. If I can, I have a calendar for you.
Judge Bino, have you already scheduled this pre-trial for these jury trials that you're talking about?
Yeah, the pre-trial's already set. I can, you know, I can cancel them if I have to, I'd rather not.
Well, I was just thinking that maybe we could look at it afterward, the pre-trial, to see what's been weaned out.
Well, that'll answer the question about jury trials. But what you need to bear in mind with this is that there's the normal people who are wanting to come to court and talk to the judge about their case. They're the guilty with circumstance people. And Judge Hale had already set quite a few of those, a couple months' worth of them, ahead of time, and I'm already setting them, too. And if I put mine after his, I'll be setting in September. Okay? And then it won't be a couple of weeks down the road, but, you know, we'll be going back even further.
Excuse me, just a minute. Councilmember Arp, were you through?
I asked the fore, and I got the answer, that won't work. So, I guess.
Well, I'm not saying it won't work, I'm just saying it's a very limited solution. I think, that's why I suggested 90 days. I wasn't suggesting we do this for six months or a year, but I believe it really will take